All right, we now have the presence of a legislative forum. So we are, so welcome to this meeting of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. We will begin quickly with introductions from members of the committee, starting from my left, going to my right, ending with our House Chairman and myself.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Peterson. I'm from Rockford, and I represent House District 115.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Christine Burstein. I live in Lakeviewville, and I represent District Number 96.
I'm Senator Ann Haskell. My district is a part of Portland and a part of Westport.
Good morning. I'm Bill Anderson. I represent District 88, which is Chelsea Whitefield-Jefferson in Port Huron, Utah.
Good morning to you all. My name is Frances Head. I live in Bethel. I represent parts of Franklin County and Oxford, 20 towns and townships.
Morning, everybody. I'm House Chair Trupatina. I represent parts of the city of Westport.
And I'm Senator Eric Brakey. I am the Senate Chair for the committee. I'd also like to introduce our committee clerk in my left corner, Annie Lori Buckman, and our committee analyst, Michael O'Brien, in my right corner. The purpose of the hearing is to invite testimony from members of the public regarding proposed legislation that is pending before this committee. The committee will hear testimony from persons present who wish to speak for or against neither for nor against the bills to be heard today. With leave of the chair, committee members may ask questions of any person testifying today. Other questions are not permitted. Whether or not you testify, you may submit written testimony to the committee. Please be mindful that testimony is public and is available to all once it is presented. Written testimony will be distributed to the committee members and will be posted on the legislative website, reviewed by interested persons. Persons testifying at the public hearing today are advised that the hearing is being broadcast on the Internet and may be heard by persons listening online. If you wish to testify, please state your name, residence, and the organization you represent, if any, and sign in at the podium. Testimony will be heard in the following order: the sponsor who will present the bill, followed by any co-sponsors; those speaking in favor of the bill; those speaking in opposition to the bill; and those speaking neither for nor against the bill. If you have any written materials to accompany your testimony, please give at least 20 copies to the committee clerk prior to testifying. Now, just a couple of Housekeeping notes. For those who've been in this committee before know some of these things, but if this is your first time here, some other things that you should know. We do use a time limit on testimony, and there will be a time clock. You will see counting down to the end of your time when you come up to testify. We have this specifically because we want to make sure, especially on bills where there's a lot of turnout from the public, we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to share their thoughts. If you have testimony that you cannot get through in the allotted period of time and you have it written, please submit it to our committee clerk. We'll all have written copies of it, and we will, if there was testimony that was not able to be gotten through in that time period, we will absolutely read it as we work on these bills. A couple of other items. We would greatly appreciate it if you have additional information that we have not yet heard. We'd love to hear from you on that. However, if you have repeat information that has been stated by previous people speaking on it, for the interest of time, we would greatly appreciate it if you did not repeat additional information. If that means you are coming up and you're just saying, "I agree with everything that person said," then that is great. You will get, I love to hand out verbal awards. We call the brevity the soul of wit. That's William Shakespeare. And to the briefest people, much love will be bestowed on you. And we will be, because we are dealing with many bills that are around similar topics, we are actually grouping these bills to be done in small groups around topics within. Everything today is on the main medical marijuana program, but within that, there are bills that deal with similar pieces in that, so we are putting those small groups together. And so that we, people can kind of see what the day is going to look like, here's how we are planning to proceed. The first group we will be hearing is LD-23, an Act to Remove from the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act, a requirement that a patient's medical condition be debilitating, and LD-35, an Act to Allow a Qualifying Patient to Use Medical Marijuana in a Hospital. That will be our first group. So what that essentially means is, if you're here to testify on either of those bills, we're going to be hearing all testimony for both of those bills at the same time. So you'll come up if you are speaking in support of either of those bills. You can come up and speak to that. If you're here to speak to both of those bills, then you can use your allotted time to share your thoughts on both of those at the same time. And if you're here to speak in opposition, you'll come up when it's time to speak in opposition. If you're here to provide additional information, and so on and so forth. So following that first group, we will then hear on another group of two bills, LD-21, an Act to Amend the Medical Marijuana Laws, and LD-560, an Act Regarding Patient Information Under the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act. And then, following that second group, we will move on to, and here's where things get a little complicated, and I apologize for this. We have about five bills that we'd like to put into one group. However, some of them are scheduled for the morning, some of them are scheduled for the afternoon. So I anticipate with how many people are here, by the time we get to that point, we might actually be in the afternoon, so it won't be a problem. But we are hoping to group together LD-5, an Act to Remove the Limit on the Number of Patients a Primary Caregiver May Provide for Under Medical Marijuana Laws; LD-266, an Act to Allow Access for Law Enforcement Officers to the List of Registered Primary Caregivers for Medical Marijuana Patients; LD-726, an Act to Increase Patient Safety in Main's Medical Marijuana Program; LD-766, an Act to Require a Medical Marijuana Primary Caregiver Cultivating in a Residential Building to Obtain an Electrical Permit; and LD-1258, an Act to Amend the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act with regard to Good Business Practices. That'll be the third group. We'll be welcoming to the afternoon at that point. The fourth group we will hear is just one bill, LD-752, an Act to Permit Medical Marijuana Cultivation by Incapacitated Adults. Then the fifth and final group will be LD-1058 and 1059, an Act, 1058 is an Act Regarding Medical Marijuana Registered Testing Laboratories, and 1059 is an Act related to Marijuana Testing Facilities. That's what the day's going to look like. It's that simple. So we are going to go ahead and jump into LD-23 and LD-35. I'm going to have to hand over the gavel to my House Chair Representative Gattin, because one of the bills is the bill I'm sponsoring. First, one other Housekeeping note I did want to say. If you see members of this committee disappearing periodically during the testimony, it's not because we're not interested in what's going on, it's because that many of us, myself included, have bills going on in other committees. I know I'm presenting one bill in another committee and work session another bill in another committee, so I may disappear periodically, and that may be true for other people. So that's not us being rude. We may have other legislative business to attend to. And anything that, I know anything that I miss, I'm going to be going through and reading any written testimony we have for items that I miss, and I know that that's true for other members of the committee as well. All right. Representative Russell, welcome to the committee, and Representative Gattin, if you'll hand over the gavel.
Senator Brakey. Thank you. Senator Brakey, Representative Gattin, and distinguished members of the esteemed Health and Human Services Committee, thank you for the opportunity to present LD-23 to you, an Act to Remove from the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act, a requirement that a patient's medical condition be debilitating. My name is Diane Russell. I represent District 39 in the main house, which are the good people of Monroeville, downtown Portland, and the beautiful Casco Bay Islands. When the medical marijuana program was first developed, it made sense to have a slow, steady rollout to ensure that patients most at risk were first in line to get access to the medicine that they need. Since the time of the introduction of this act, thousands of patients have been able to dramatically improve their quality of life, whether they are facing a terminal illness or fighting a chronic one. Recently, we made the decision to ensure our military service members could have access to the assistance medical marijuana is providing for PTSD for those returning from war. While the VA has been reticent to allow it, and that is a problem, it is having a market impact for those who can access it. They are getting off other highly addictive drugs in the process. Let me stop and just say that when I first introduced the full legalization bill that many people are aware of about four years ago last week, I didn't believe in the medical marijuana program. I thought that it was just a step to legalization. That was my fundamental belief. I didn't mind. I got on the bus and came all the way home to vote for it. I voted for it every time, but that was my belief. And when I put the legalization bill in, I had people come out of the woodwork. And at first, you can chalk it up and say, "Ah, yeah, you have a sore back," or "you have this." But over time, I heard one phrase repeated over and over and over and over again. I got my life back. And I have since done a complete 180 degree turn and fundamentally believe that medical marijuana is having transformative effects for patients all across this state. This bill would recognize that this program is working for Maine people, for patients. But more importantly, it would recognize the sanctity of the doctor-patient relationship. We now know that it's working. It is time to let our doctors and our nurse practitioners do what they have been highly educated to do and remove the government from the doctor's office. Now, let's be honest, I can't imagine anyone here would want me to write scripts to treat their diabetes or their cancer. So why would we suggest that non-medical politicians are more qualified than physicians and nurse practitioners to determine what treatment modality works best for their patient? There has been considerable research being done in Maine regarding Maine's medical marijuana uses, and I believe it's time to let that research continue while, more importantly, ensuring our providers can determine what the best treatment plan is for their patients. Politicians and government should get out of the doctor's office, and LD-23 ensures that that occurs. I will be submitting, presenting several more bills before this committee, and another bill in another committee, so this is going to be a fun day for me. I wore my running shoes, as you can see. I also, since brevity is the soul of wit, I would like to say that I am a lead co-sponsor on LD-35, which my friend here is going to submit, but I will spare you the verbal testimony, and I will submit it in writing later today so that you have that, but just know that I strongly, strongly support making sure that our young folks have access to medical marijuana in the hospital. And with that, I would be more than happy to take any questions, and if you would prefer to wait until work sessions so that everybody else behind us can speak, considering you'll have many more opportunities to bite this apple than there today, you would be happy to do so.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions, Representative Russell? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
And we're going to hear from Senator Brakey on LD-35. Good morning, Senator.
Good morning. Representative Gattin, distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services, my name is Senator Eric Brakey, and I represent the people of Auburn, New Gloucester, Poland, Minnet, and McCannan Falls. I am here today to present LD-35, an Act to Allow a Qualifying Patient to Use Medical Marijuana in a Hospital. I believe there are many who will come behind me to speak to this bill, so in trying to set a good example and practicing what I preach, that brevity is the soul of wit, I will keep my comments very brief. I became aware of the problem this bill seeks to address when I heard stories of several young children with severe epilepsy, for whom medical marijuana had dramatically improved their lives. Whenever they encountered a health problem and had to check into a hospital, however, they were suddenly separated from the medicine they needed in order to reduce their seizures and live a normal life. This bill seeks to allow a medical marijuana patient with a doctor's recommendation the ability to use their medicine while checked in as a patient at a hospital. Does not require hospital staff to interact with these medications in any manner. Additionally, this bill only makes allowances for medical marijuana when it is administered in a smokeless form that does not disturb others. We have already, we already have these provisions in place for nursing facilities, and we would simply extend that existing policy to our hospitals. As promised, I kept my comments very brief, so many behind me to speak to this bill. For now, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Senator. Are there any questions for Senator Brakey? Thank you, Senator. Any co-sponsors? Looks like there's one who'd like to testify in favor of either one of these bills. Senator Haskell.
Good morning.
Always nice to see my senator up there presenting a bill.
Nice to meet you. Thanks, Senator. Maybe you can... Good morning. I'm Senator Ann Haskell, previously described, representing parts of Westport and parts of Portland. I brought some testimony here to you today, which kind of looks ancient, like it came off my Apple computer in 1992. I will apologize to those people in the room who heard this testimony before, and there are some of you here who have and know this story, but I think it's an important one. 1992, when I presented this, what I said was, and every time I present this, I think, "Oh, I'll just get out my own testimony and, you know, brush it up," and every time I do, I realize that what it says here is what I mean to tell you. On February 15th, two years ago, that would have been 1990, I sat in a conference room of a high-risk pregnancy, OB-GYN, with my pregnant daughter, and heard what no parent should ever have to hear, that their child gets cancer. I'll tell you here that that child was 27, but as a mother, shall always be my child. The weeks that ensued, my grandson's premature C-section birth, my daughter Susan's extensive surgery to remove the 25-pound tumor, and the stark realization of the seriousness of an infant in the NICU, the invasion of an aggressive ovarian cancer in my child, were the darkest and most hideous of my life and remains. Medical science brought us a long way. The skill of the surgeon, that was Hector Tarazza, saved her life. The 26 pints of blood she received from healthy donors, and the IC that saved an infant who would not have survived just a few years ago, and the knowledge of the gynecological oncologist started her on a path of recovery, but that was not without a price. The price for this hope of recovery is a treatment as aggressive as the disease. After Jock was delivered, she was hospitalized for two weeks, and just as soon as her sizable scar, and you can imagine with that kind of an invasive tumor, how big that scar was, as soon as it was partially healed, she began a treatment regimen that can only be described as torture. For each treatment, which were 16 days apart, she was hospitalized for five days with three aggressive IV drugs running all the time. I remember walking in once, and they had glass bottles instead of the bags, and I said, "How come that's not in a bag?" "Oh, it eats the plastic." That's what they were running into her veins. The end of her treatments, the veins in her hands and arms were as hard as rope. The platinum had poisoned her nervous system, so she had very little feeling in her hands and feet. She couldn't even feel that baby's skin. She lost all her long blond hair, the white blood cell count dropped to 14, and her skin felt like onion skin paper, and the nausea I won't even try to describe. It set on her days before her treatment. It was excruciating during her hospital stay, and it dragged on after each treatment at the sight or smell of almost any food, and at the sight of any medical equipment. An intermediate visit to the doctor's office was a nightmare for her, and I pray here that none of you ever have to watch someone you love go through this. She had various drugs prescribed for the nausea. Most of them had a side effect of diarrhea. She was particularly sensitive to them, and I don't need to tell you the last thing that someone violently nauseous with barely enough strength to crawl to the bathroom needs is a few bouts of diarrhea. Of course, the treatment regimen caused her nourishing food and plenty of fluids just to withstand the treatment itself, to say nothing appealing from the scars and the surgery. As a family, we decided she should try marijuana, anything so she could keep down a little soup or a little juice. We decided who in the family could risk possible arrest or criminal record. Her husband was a machinist at Pathine Works, couldn't risk that. They have very strict rules in his job, and consequently, their health insurance would have been gone in a heartbeat. And her brother, who was a researcher at the Foundation for Blood Research in Scarborough, had been working on long-term research projects with genetic markers for Down Syndrome, stuff like that. He couldn't very well jeopardize an entire project with that stigma. And my job, I was a representative at the time, doesn't lend itself well at all to illegal activity. We're expected to be a higher standard than other citizens. My husband, her father, however, was self-employed. No loss to firing, no insurance to lose, nothing to lose but a clean record and an upstanding life. The marijuana was not a cure-all. She did not miraculously gain strength and vigor, but she could at those times eat some food, and I'm not sure how she could have survived the treatment without nourishment. I don't take the podium lightly today, nor do I today again. Her story's painful to relive, and all of us in the family have chosen to put it behind us for the joy we share in our healthy grandson and her complete remission. However, if one other family doesn't have to go through this, even a small part of it, because this treatment is made available, it will have been worth our efforts today. 1992 was the first year that medical marijuana was voted on by the House and the Senate affirmatively. It was vetoed by the then-governor. It did not become law then. But I'll tell you, I have been in this battle for a long time. My daughter has chosen not to make this define her life, so she doesn't come up and talk about it. That was in her past. But I think this story is important today as we talk about this. I think about what it might have meant for her those days before treatment began in the hospital, if she'd been able to keep a little calmer with the, keep her stomach a little calmer, to be able to manage some of those side effects better than some of the drugs that they gave her. So I stand here today in support of a whole variety of these, but also wanting to share the story about the importance of medical marijuana or the side effects of that key word. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Senator. Glad you kept that testimony after all this year. I'm glad you're still here with us.
Thank you.
Tell the story. Any questions for Senator Haskell? Thank you very much. This wonderful testimony, I'm glad we got that out of the way early. So we really need to watch in this room out for side of for or against bills. I know this is a very important emotional issue. Some people come in this room all the time, and they're very, very comfortable when I give up the podium and I sit in here. Other people, it's a real leap of faith to be commended this room, and so we really just want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable, because we're going to hear a lot of contrary. So I'm really going to ask you guys, any sort of like out for side of pro or con or positive or negative, try to keep a lid on that, so. Thank you very much. Again, any other co-sponsors who would like to testify on one of these two bills? Anybody here who's speaking in favor of either of these two bills? And again, we're LD-35, Senator Brakey's bill, and LD-23, one of Trump's and Russell's bills. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to stop running the clock. I don't run it unless there are co-sponsors.
Do I, I'm signing it?
If you can sign, that's great. So when you see the lights flash, just be able to type it back in front of the box and keep going after them. If you're sitting there enjoying it, and you have multiple pages of testimony, keep in mind that three minutes is really about one single space, and so, thank you. We will, I'm sure, everybody asked out, maybe you heard that.
I'm going to try. There's a lot to cover.
Okay.
Okay. Good morning, Senator Brakey, Representative Gattin, members of the DHH Committee. My name is Samantha Brown from South Berwick, and I support LD-35 and 23. Some of you may remember me from last year. I have a three-year-old little girl named Kaylee diagnosed with a potentially catastrophic form of epilepsy, which is prone to hours of seizing, with no known effective pharmaceutical treatment. She uses medical cannabis, aka marijuana, which is her only chance at surviving life with a normal cognitive development and effective seizure control. In the past year, we have ended up in the hospital twice. Both times, Kaylee was denied access to her cannabis. This left me as a mom in the uncomfortable position to sneak Kaylee's medicine to her to protect her life. An individual with a seizure condition cannot stop taking an anti-epileptic medication abruptly without the risk of laryngeal seizures. Doing so will put an epilepsy patient like my daughter at a very high risk of prolonged seizures that may not stop until death occurs. By skipping such as one dose of cannabis by just a half hour will allow seizures to reappear. When my child goes into the hospital seizing, our main goal is to stop the seizures and stabilize her. By denying her one of the only effective therapies, her condition can worsen. The longer she seizes, her chances of cognition declines and the higher her fatality rate increases. When a hospital prohibits a patient to a lifesaving medication, even a plant-based one, that hospital creates a potentially fatal situation and directly puts my child in danger. In the future, I hope my daughter can be pharmaceutical-free, and there's severe side effects. I pray I can keep her from a life of drooling on herself in a wheelchair, unaware of the excitement of a birthday party, or the magic of Christmas, and being unable to experience the simple pleasures of playing games like tag on the playground with other kids, something that Dr. Bay syndrome, along with all of its ineffective pharmaceutical medications, is known to rob children of. A hospital admission for such as anything, like the flu, would require a halt in her daily cannabis oil and force to go back on the very medications it took three years to come off. Kaylee started her wean a year ago. At her current reduction rate of Kepra, it'll take her another two years to completely be free of. What sense does it make to stop an effective therapy and switch to an ineffective drug for the sole purpose of a biased policy? AEDs are highly addictive and dangerous to wean. Last June, due to a laryngeal, Kaylee had a three-hour seizure ending in a medically-induced coma. Why should she go through that again, due simply to a hospital stay? It's not only hell for her, it's hell for us. Helplessly watching her violently convulsing body, lips turning blue as her breathing pauses, praying she doesn't aspirate the puddles of thick saliva collecting in her mouth when she gasps for oxygen, sitting in terror as it leaves us wondering if she will come back to us this time, and if her cognitive gains will remain the same. Patients need to be allowed to do what is right for their bodies. It should be a conversation and decision between doctor and patient on whether or not marijuana should be used, not an umbrella policy prohibiting its use. Why should an effective treatment and safe treatment be so discouraged? Cannabis is an herbal product, a plant, non-factually classified as a Schedule I substance. Suppose I brought her elderberry or astragalus extract or stevia extract that sweetens her food, her special diet recommended by a licensed holistic doctor. Only because of its classification does this deem a problem. We are not asking hospitals to prescribe, store, and dispense. We are asking that patients be allowed to continue their therapy in the hospital by personally possessing, storing, and dosing their own nonsmokable herbal cannabis recommended by their own doctor within Maine state law. I am proud of Maine for doing what's right, being a leader by challenging unjust federal laws while allowing its people the right to cannabis therapy. Maine created a great system, and for that, I am thankful beyond words that we do not have to uproot our family of four, each hatch from our home, a state where we grew up, family and friends we admire, to reach a therapy that has the power to save my daughter's life. The reason for LD-35 is an example of the struggles of laws that do not match on two levels over one land. I ask that we continue to fight these unjust situations and push forward improvements. Changes needed to happen yesterday, so please change.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Thanks for coming back this year and speaking with us again.
Thank you.
Any questions, Representative Anderson?
Thank you for being here. You also expressed support for LD-23. Do you have a few words that...
I have a lot of words. Unfortunately, I can only do, but I can...
Well, did the timer, can you just give us a quick, you know, summation of one you feel that's important?
Yes. I believe what's driving us in our legislation is stigma. The stigma roots based on reaper madness, corporate greed, seeming with lies, and racism in the 1930s. The truth is, it's positively changing lives. Cannabis can help so many illnesses. It's important that we should be able to have a discussion between the doctor, whether or not this is a good treatment or not, not something that the government should prefer. Talking with other parents who have children diagnosed with less chronic but problematic illnesses, I find that they're being treated with harsh pharmaceuticals that give them their children unwanted side effects. One mom tells me that her five-year-old son was diagnosed with attention deficit disorder. This medication prescribed to him caused him to become suicidal. This very young boy found, was found attempting to hang himself in the closet, expressing to his mom he no longer wanted to live. This behavior was very highly unlike him. Um, this behavior was very highly unlike him. Another story, um, from another parent with ADHD, the child with ADHD, um, had developed TICs due to the prescribed medication. If we go with the argument, uh, we don't know what the long-term effects of marijuana are, what we do know is that the FDA approved drugs have harsh side effects, um, and for many, we do not know what the long-term side effects are, um, and many we do know that they are damaging. Another case is that we simply, or an argument is that we simply need studies. I just, how many terminal cancer patients can you tell, completely cured after a round of proper whole-plant cannabis treatment, um, or the numerous epileptic patients that have seen great relief of their seizures, um, that it does not work simply because it was not studied? Um, I don't understand how anyone could look my little girl in the eye and tell her, um, that this treatment does not work for her simply because there's no double-blind studies, um, to say that it does. We have a human right.
Senator, Ms. Brown, do you have, do you have written copies of your testimony that you could share with us?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Still take the testimony in favor.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and esteemed members, senators, representatives, and citizens. My name is Susan Meham from Dixfield, Maine, um, probably better known as Cindy May's mom, and I strongly support LD-23, that states that a patient's medical condition not necessarily be debilitating for a doctor to recommend marijuana as treatment. Why should a person be dying before seeking better options to health? Before failing 23 FDA-approved anti-epileptic drugs, or AEDs, Cindy May's condition was not debilitating. After 23 FDA-approved AEDs caused dulled cognition, caused different kinds of seizures, stopped her heart five times, regularly caused respiratory arrest, robbed us of her sweet, loving nature, and left a suicidal, homicidal, violent 10-year-old. They sent her blood chemistries out of whack, and limited her ability to walk, talk, and eat. Then she was debilitated, and then we ran from Connecticut and came here to Maine. How much better could she have been with 2,000 fewer spike events a day, thousands fewer seizures, or without the benzodiazepines, the arbituics, the glorified psych meds, and the powerful sedatives? Why should a person be debilitated before a doctor can recommend the right treatment? Let legislators legislate so that doctors can medicate. There are countless studies worldwide, and countless studies added on the National Institute of Health website. Let's stop perpetuating the lies of not enough studies and not been around long enough. Marijuana has been used medically by humans for thousands of years. That's all I have on LD-23, um, and I have written testimony to give you. I also would like to speak in support of LD-35.
You're doing really good with your mouth, so thank you.
I, I strongly support and publicly support LD-35. Um, in fact, Senator Brackey, Brackey saw our story on Channel 6, and, and was moved to propose this, this bill. Without the protection of law offered by LD-35, Maine citizens who legally use marijuana to treat their ailments continue to face opinion-based discrimination that borders on harassment at some of Maine's hospitals, not all. Most of Maine's hospitals respect that they do business in the state of Maine, and they respect the laws of the state in which they do business. However, some of Maine's hospitals and some of their employees are placing patient lives in danger, especially and including children having a generalized tonic-clonic seizure who are not breathing, are desaturating, and rapidly turning blue. I won't argue with a doctor in that situation, I administer her medication. Some employees at these hospitals clearly object to Maine's medical marijuana laws, and clearly object to its use in their hospitals. Parents and patients should not feel threatened stopping a child's seizure or treating their pain or other ailment with a safe and effective, legal-in-the-state-of-Maine, plant-based medicine. In Cindy May's case, rectally administered high THC cannabis oil is the only thing that rapidly stops her generalized seizures. She's allergic to nearly every other rescue medication on the market that is FDA-approved, most of them have nearly killed her. And Cindy May, sorry, see evidence by searching her name on YouTube. It is not anecdotal nor coincidence that Cindy May has not had to use Dystat to stop a seizure, but four times in 15 months, at a savings of four doses a day at about $60 per dose out of pocket. I will not place my daughter's life in danger by withholding the only medication that stops her seizures simply because the hospital pharmacy cannot test it, duplicate it, or bill it. If a, if a business chooses to do business in the state of Maine, said business should honor and respect our laws. This is about doing no harm and following the recommendation of a doctor, chief pediatric neurologist at Tufts University, who knows this patient. Refusing to follow her seizure treatment protocol and to continue her anti-seizure medication will certainly result in harm, prolong status epilepticus, and death. LD-35 is necessary to protect patients from arbitrary disregard of Maine state laws based on personal opinions and unfounded fear. You'll hear arguments that the feds are making us do it. The only hospitals licensed by the federal government are the Veterans Administration. Nurses, doctors, hospitals, and even schools are licensed state by state, and in Maine, right here today, we're in the right place if we need to adjust other Maine state laws to be in agreement with the fact that marijuana is legal medical treatment in the state of Maine. Other states include language to protect healthcare professionals. Additionally, there's plenty of case history to prove that the federal government cannot threaten funding or coerce states to comply with laws that are in disagreement with state law, federal law. Case history, I've given you written testimony, there's plenty of case history. The issue at play here is not about federal law, it's not about jeopardizing licenses.
We're concerned with the state.
Okay, I have, um, written testimony and, um, other, what's on?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that testimony with us today. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Good morning. Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and esteemed members of the Health and Human Services Committee, good morning. Uh, my name is Becky DeCoyster, and I am the Director of Community and Education for the Wellness Connection of Maine. Uh, I also serve...